His new nickname is Shotgun.
Shotgun and Shooter.
Shotgun and Shooter?
Yeah.
I wish I could shoot.
And I got, I got my little pup, her name's Boo.
What?
Boo.
Boo?
Boo.
You know, I always name my dogs.
I know.
Something different because when I used to duck hunt, I used to hear people yelling at the dogs.
Oh, that's interesting.
You don't know if they're yelling at somebody else or they're yelling at their dog.
Two people. That's awesome. Winds? A wind, whatever it's up. Usually, no, you're right. Six, that's what she's doing.
Yeah, well, our female we got. Soon as she goes one is up, she's up there. Parking. Five o'clock. Been bothering me over here.
Well, there you go. What's an M? You know?
It's a Y.
Give me a break.
We have no confidant.
Keep, keep this going, carry this gun.
I need to chat with him.
What are you doing with that?
I don't know. Just gotta stay here and talk to myself.
Hey, somebody's fix. Phil Cox is not here.
No.
So.
He's in, he's in training.
Gina, we ready?
He's in training.
Good morning. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board Supervisor meeting. If you'd please stand and join me for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. First item this morning is our Board of Supervisor Matters, and I'll begin to my right this morning, Mr. Ennis.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday, we went up to Selma, and Manuel Kuna put on a presentation by the Nessie Farms League, presenting $30,000 to the different communities. We had three communities in Tulare County. We had Cutler Rossi, we had Farmersville, and then Terabella, which is in my district. And we want to thank Teteauka Farms and Orange Coast Opnessy Club for getting that money put together and donated to the Food Link operation so that food can be given out to these communities. The the Step Up Grants are going to be coming out here shortly. There'll be $100,000 available, $20,000 per district, per supervisor. And all those wishing to participate need to come to a special workshop, which we'll be putting on February 11th, 9:00 a.m. at the Board of Supervisor rooms here. So if they have any questions, you can either get ahold of one of our board reps, Julieta Martinez, or Melissa, or one of the board reps, and they will fill you in on how to get those grants and get more information on it. And so that's just about all I have this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis? Mr. Ashida?
Last week, I attended the Sequoia Yosemite RC&amp;D meeting in Madera, and that's a group that does mountain projects, foothill projects. And from there, I attended a meeting in, I'm gonna look it up here. Locally, we had a reception at the Boy Scout office, and we're trying to get our alumni for the Boy Scouts active again and build our presence of the Boy Scouts in Tulare County. This, tomorrow, we have a a meeting that we're sponsoring, the Water Commission's sponsoring on behalf of CSAC about the groundwater management program that's coming down from the state of California. And that meeting will be at 9:30 at the Edison Ag Tech Building in Tulare. The function we went with, with the Nessie Farmers League that was giving money to three communities in Tulare County, the money actually came from Orange County. There were growers from Orange County who donated money to the food bank for us in Tulare County and Fresno County. So it was kind of neat to have someone from Orange County, the growers there, donate money to the food bank in the Central Valley. And it just shows that we're all linked together in agriculture. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Benzel? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, real quick, go over a few things. Last week, we had a very good meeting with the High Speed Rail Authority. I talked about it last week, and we had Resource Management Agency staff, as well as several officials from the High Speed Rail Authority and property owners who are directly impacted by the route. The Authority seemed very open to the reduction of impacts on these individual property owners that were affected. And it remains to be seen whether or not that will come back here to us for the Board to approve when we take up the potential cooperative agreement. But I am more optimistic than what I was before we went into that meeting, so I look forward to seeing the outcome of that. This week, we are, myself and Julieta and Allison are going to be meeting with several individuals from Tipton, as well as the school superintendent, regarding establishing a Summer Night Lights program there this year. Hopefully, that will come together and we'll be able to serve another community that has a tremendous need with that great program. Also, that same day, I will be meeting with Supervisor Worthley, as well as a couple of individuals from PG&E regarding establishing community resource events, community energy events, county resource events in District Four, as we did in both the communities of Alpon and Waukina over the, these last couple of years. So look forward to that, and I think it'll have a great impact up there as well. Next week is the biggest event in Tulare County, in my opinion, in the valley. That's the World Ag Expo. I hope everyone plans on attending. Kicks off on Tuesday morning with the opening ceremonies and runs through Thursday. Hope you enjoy the traffic as well. Also, on that next Friday, the Tulare Senior Center will be honoring volunteers who volunteered at the center to help seniors at 11:00 a.m. with a special luncheon and award presentation. So anyone interested in attending, please do so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up on the World Ag Expo, we will not be meeting next Tuesday. We originally had kept that meeting date scheduled, but because of the lack of, actually, amount of work we need to do that day, we decided to cancel the meeting, so we'll be able to attend that. We normally go in early in the morning and then maybe come back later on for a meeting here, but otherwise, we won't be doing that this year. One of the things that Mr. Ashida shared with me the other day, when he was at, I believe it came from his Sierra Conservancy meeting, was talking about the mortality in the national forest of 30%.
Twenty.
20% of the pines are expected to have already died or expected to die in the Sierra Nevada, and that number could go to 50%. So this is a serious situation. It hasn't received much publicity, but I wish it would get more so because it really, it's an emergency that needs emergent action. And most of it's on federal lands, so it needs action by the Forest Service, Park Service, BLM property to deal with it because the problem can be exacerbated by these dead trees because of the bark beetles. A bark beetle population explodes when you leave those trees standing in the forest, and then even healthy trees become susceptible to attack by these beetles. Normally, it would be just the unhealthy trees. So this is a very serious situation. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of sawmill capacity, virtually none, to deal with it. So we may have to look at maybe, you know, changing the rules up, allowing export or something, but certainly, it's a shame to let these trees just rot in the woods and create a greater problem in the future. This last Friday, I attended the Dinuba Chamber of Commerce, which was a great event. Always fun to see people that otherwise you might not see but once a year, and good turnout for that. And I believe that's all I have for today.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot a few things.
Oh, Mr. Ashida?
Yeah, I forgot that I attended Lindsey Chamber of Commerce Awards dinner Saturday night, and we had Mike Butler selected the Man of the Year, and Alice Gutierrez was selected the Woman of the Year for Lindsey Chamber. Also, there's a meeting Wednesday night, which I plan to attend, in Fresno, and the meeting's for people who are located around the proposed Temperance Flat Reservoir. And they're gonna hopefully go over what impact it's, there will be on the local residents if Temperance Flat, or when Temperance Flat is built. So that meeting's at 6:30 in Fresno, and I do have the address if anybody's interested.
Very good. Then we move on to item number two, which is a proclamation recognizing February as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County. I guess I'm the presenter. Okay. So I would invite the Grand Jury Foreman Chuck White. Mr. White, I understand you were gonna say, make a few comments first, so why don't you go ahead and make your presentation, and then I'll come down and present a proclamation, and I believe Judge.
That's the first time I heard about I had to speak, so. But this has kind of worked out about right with us because February 1st, we kicked off our recruiting for next year already. And I'd like to thank all the people that's worked with me this year, because they've done excellent already for the six months we've been working. And Judge Peyton here, he's been excellent to work with this year, getting our stuff out fast and quick. And he's just, I'm so proud of the jury we have this year. My expectation has gone far beyond what I thought we would have. And I should like to thank you for the proclamation you're giving us, and I think my judge has a few words to say.
Thank you. Judge, good. Welcome.
Good morning. Did you get your Davy Crockett jacket?
I have to arm wrestle Judge Brown.
Howard Ford. All right. Good morning, and thank you for this recognition of our grand jury. I got involved about two years ago as the Assistant Presiding Judge with the grand jury. Didn't know much about it at that time. David Serpa, who is the Assistant Foreperson, really kind of took me under his wing and kind of explained the process. And believe me, for the last two years, I've been very involved with the grand jury, and it's been such a rewarding experience. We should be very proud of what they do. They work hard. They're the watchdog for the county and our communities, and I'm very proud of them. I couldn't, I'm sad to say that taking over as Presiding Judge, I'm going to lose a little bit of that connection, but they'll be in good hands with our Assistant Presiding Judge, Judge Hillman. But I would like, if we could, give a round of applause for what they do. And I'd like that we have several.
Please stand, grand jury members that are clear, please stand up.
Back to you.
I know we'll want to take a picture of all three of us here in the grand jury in a moment, but I would like to read this proclamation recognizing the month of February 2015 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County. Whereas the civil grand jury is made up of 19 citizens who serve the county of Tulare for a one-year term after selection. And whereas the individual grand jurors are selected from volunteer applicants that have been screened and qualified by the judges of the Superior Court with final selection of the 19 obtained by random drawing. And whereas the jurisdiction of the grand jury extends to all activities of local government within the geographic limits of Tulare County. And whereas the primary function of the grand jury is to provide independent oversight into efficiency, effectiveness, honesty, and impartiality of government by the citizens of Tulare County. And whereas the grand jury, in a large measure, relies upon public awareness and responsiveness of the public to its public reports, which details its findings and recommendations. And whereas it is believed that public awareness and responsiveness of the grand jury's function and purpose can be furthered by governmental declaration of awareness. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize February 2015 to be Grand Jury Awareness Month in order for all citizens to become better acquainted with the purposes of the grand jury, to give attention to the grand jury's public reports, and to encourage public participation in the grand jury process. Signed, Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Kinnis. Congratulations, and thank you. If we could have the members come up, we'd like to get a picture of everybody.
Steve? He needs to bring him in. Steve? Steve? Steve?
You need to be in the well, I think. There's just too many people to.
How's it going? Good to see you. How are ya? Yep, absolutely.
He's not out there. He'd have to be in the front row.
Judge, thank you.
Thank you.
Let you guys know about the horse.
Davy Crockett, that was. See there? That went over a long thick thing.
All right, we'll go to item number three, which is a presentation given by the Tulare County Treasurers Website Group regarding a progress report. And I understand that Laurie Schwaller and Paul Hurley are here today. Paul Hurley, we thought had retired and left the countryside, but I guess he's still here.
You know better than that. You're not gonna get rid of me that easy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Supervisors and Citizens. I'm Paul Hurley. Thanks for that introduction, Steve. I'm a member of the Tulare County Treasures Project, and I'm here today with Laurie Schwaller. And Greg Schwaller, who's at the computer, and some other members of our team. If I could stand from your left to right, John Greeney, Charlotte Kirkpatrick, and Louise Jackson. I think you know all those people. Oh, Jean Axon? I'm sorry, I didn't see Jean in the back there. Jean Axon, right behind them.
Welcome to all of you.
And thank you for giving us some time today. Two years ago, we came before you at Supervisor Ashida's invitation, in fact, to introduce you to our project and website, Tulare County Treasures, a legacy of land and people. And our website is now up on the screen, and presumably up on yours. Our project team is still all volunteers, and Tulare County Treasure continues as an entirely non-commercial, nonprofit enterprise. Our mission remains the same, to celebrate, educate, and inspire by telling the stories of the many dozens of special places, including natural lands, farms and ranches, buildings, cultural and historic sites that have been officially conserved in Tulare County and are open to the public, at least some of the time. This includes sharing the stories of the generations of visionary and dedicated people, many of them Tulare County citizens, who have worked over the last 120 years to protect and steward these treasures for the benefit of all of us and for the generations to come. The Treasures Project team began to come together in August of 2011. When we talked with you in February of 2013, it's been two years, we had been working for almost a year and a half. During that time, we developed our mission and goals. We decided to focus on creating a website with videos, design features. We got equipment and software and learned how to set up and manage a website and a basic in-home video studio. We received a grant from the Tulare County Historical Society to help with expenses and help from the Tulare County Office of Education some generous neighbors on how to shoot and edit video, research and write articles, and launch the website in December of 2012. In February 2013, when we last talked to you, we had published 12 articles and four videos on the website. As of today, we have published 28 articles and nine videos, plus five bonus articles and a sidebar. In January 2013, we inaugurated our Tulare County Treasures Facebook page. I don't suppose we can go to that, huh, Greg? There we go. To let visitors know about events and activities in the various treasure sites and to announce what's new on our website. We're approaching, oh, what do we got there? 386. Close to 400. Could somebody out there like us really quick? Get that 400 threshold? In May of 2013, Tulare County Treasures won one of the two grand prizes, and all three of the runner-up prizes, in Valley PBS's Valley Gold Video Contest. Bravo Lake was the grand prize and Runner-Up Circle. The runner-up was Circle River Ridge, Circle J, River Ridge at Sweet Home Ranch. Our videos are online at PBS and have been shown on PBS television stations in and out of California. And now Laurie's gonna tell you about a new feature on our website. Mrs. Schwaller?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. In November of 2014, we published an exciting new feature on the website, interactive maps in the Maps and Tours section, and I want to introduce you to it. Visitors can now see a whole countywide map with pins representing every treasure that we hope to write about. You can blow up the map to see more detail. Let's look at the Visalia area, for instance, which has lots of treasures. Click on any pin to see the name of the corresponding treasure, such as the Fox Theater. Clicking on the More Information line at the red pin lets you link directly to the treasure's webpage. The yellow, the light yellow pins represent treasures that don't yet have articles. When there's a cluster of treasures, a whole lot in one place, you can zoom in for more detail, and often, when you do that, you'll see more treasures. For example, take a look at Porter Ville, which is especially rich in treasures. We've got articles on only two of them so far. The red pins that you see are for Yodanshi Ecological Reserve and for Tulie River Parkway. Once again, if you click on a red pin, you will see the More Information line. We'll take Tulie River Parkway as an example and reach its webpage, which includes a video. These webpages all feature plenty of photos, header information about the treasure, such as when it's open, activities that can be enjoyed there, and how to contact the site steward. A map and directions are at the bottom of every page to make it easy to get to the treasure. Also, to make trip planning easy and fun, we've divided our big county into four quadrants on the map. Northeast, Southeast, Southwest, and Northwest. You can click, you can click on a quadrant label, such as, for example, the Southeast quadrant. And then you'll see photos and a map showing all the treasures in that area that already have TCT webpages. If you click on any photo or any map marker, such as for Circle J Norris Ranch, you'll get a brief description of that treasure, and you'll be able to see when it's open. Again, if you click on the More Information line in the description box, you'll go straight to that treasure's webpage. You can click on the back arrow at the top left of the page, and you'll go back to the interactive map. We hope you'll check out all four quadrants for lots of ideas about great places to go, whatever the time of year and whatever your interest might be. We hope these maps will lead both residents and visitors to discover and explore many more of our county's treasures and their nearby communities. In the last couple of years, we have continued to focus mostly on content. But we've also made a number of presentations to various service groups and other organizations, including schools, and we've tabled at some events. Our next one will be at Saicon's Annual Open House in April. We've had media coverage in local publications and online in an array of other websites. We appreciate Supervisor Cox's putting TCT on the front page of the Farm Bureau's publication for the 2014 World Ag Expo. We also appreciate the link from the county's website to TCT, and now we're thrilled to see that Chairman Worthley has included our Legacy of Land and People in the 2015 World Ag Expo Farm Bureau Newsletter. Even some Wikipedia articles now cite and link to TCT website articles, including Wikipedia in Russian. Our website receives quite a lot of mail thanking us for the site and inquiring about the treasures. We get some pretty interesting questions, like which treasures somebody could get married at, where to buy products from Sweet Home Ranch, and whether a film company could shoot a movie in Balch Park. We referred that one to Eric Coyne. The website gets pretty steady traffic with a high so far of 700-page views in a single day. We also get lots of visitors to our Facebook page. If you haven't had a chance to visit the beautiful new mural of Bravo Lake Botanical Garden in Woodlake, you can see it on our Facebook page. We posted it January 17th. We have six videos currently in the works, and we're planning to produce at least that many more. A few dozen articles still need to be researched and written, but we published another bonus article yesterday on the mysterious life of Vernal Pools in conjunction with World Wetlands Day, and another main article should be published this month on Pixley National Wildlife Refuge. Our dedicated and determined authors and photographers keep steadily sending in new material for new webpages. All of us on the project team continue to be inspired by the opportunity to share in words and pictures the stories of the wonderful diversity of treasures in our county and the remarkable people who continue to protect and steward them for us residents and for visitors from around the world. We hope to continue to increase enjoyment of and pride in Tulare County and these treasures which so enhance our heritage and our quality of life. Now back to Paul.
Thank you, Laurie. Greg, can we get back to that Vernal Pool video? Laurie didn't have a chance to talk too much about that. We just did publish it yesterday? And I just want to point it out, not so that it's the newest thing to put on our website, and we're constantly upgrading the website and adding new features, but it's kind of an example of a special feature for viewers of that website, where they can explore some real mysteries of our natural world right here in Tulare County. That video shows the microscopic creatures that live in wetlands, in vernal pools, that only appear in the spring, in a rainy season. I don't think there's going to be any this year, unfortunately, but we can hope, we got to fingers crossed. But it's just an example of all the information that is packed in this website: historic, cultural, scientific, natural information, geographical information, information for visitors, and information for students. And we're really proud of the information that we've compiled on our website and how we've been working it so far. Thanks, Greg. Tulare County Treasures and Tulare County Board of Supervisors and government share the same vision and the same mission: to celebrate, educate, and inspire people regarding the treasured places in our county. Tulare County Treasures is helping with the county's efforts in tourism, in education, in conservation, and in recognition of those efforts that maintain our county's quality of life and sustain its unique heritage. It's important to continue that recognition if we want our county's posterity, to have the opportunity to enjoy the conserved spaces and institutions that mean so much to our culture, to our history, and to our relationship with nature. We value the support of the Board of Supervisors, in whatever capacity you might extend it, even if it is simple public acknowledgement of our efforts, such as the gracious remarks last year by Supervisor Phil Cox and this year by Supervisor Alan Ishida, in this year's...
Worthley.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Worthley. Okay, Alan, you're up next here. I'll draw that, transfer to steam, sorry. In this year's World Ag Expo program. Thank you very much for recognizing that. And we know that your support is of our work. Our team and county officials are partners, sometimes in ways that might not be readily evident. We look forward to the supervisors continuing their partnership with us, especially by helping us identify and celebrate specific sites that are treasures in each of your districts. You can help us by identifying places that you believe need recognition on Tulare County Treasures. We value your assistance in obtaining the information in your communities that allows us to celebrate these sites, and we respect and appreciate the responsibility supervisors have as elected leaders to designate and protect future sites that deserve to be conserved. I want to thank you very much for your time this morning, and thank you in advance for your continued support. Appreciate it. If any of you have any questions?
Other any questions, comments?
Couple of comments. I know the group has a deep love for our county, and you've been able to accomplish something that's way beyond what we could accomplish as a Board of Supervisors. And the real treasure, not only we have these physical treasures in Tulare County, is the treasures we have in our people. And that means you and the rest of the people in Tulare County for taking this project on without any knowledge of website, how to put videos together, how to put it, just piece it all together. A lot of people would never attempt to explore or go forward with something they really didn't understand how to portray or get out to the public. But it did not stop this group, because I know the people in this group, they're very talented, and they're very, when they set their minds to do something, they're going to do it. So I really look at, this is a great presentation, is a great website, but to me, the real treasure are those of you who put it together, and I want to thank you.
Well, well said. I had nothing left to say now. I did want to say thank you for taking your time to come this morning and to update us on what you're doing. I think it's a marvelous, marvelous enterprise, and one that, as you point out, you know, never really knows an end to it, because there are sites yet to be discovered in terms of they're known by others, but not necessarily known by you all, that are worthwhile. And I think what a great time to do this, that we enter, you know, we approach the World Ag Expo, what a great opportunity to present what you're doing, because people come here, they, a lot of times they'll come and they won't extend their stay. What do I do after I've been to the Ag Expo? I mean, I guess they're shopping at the outlet mall. But I mean, there are other opportunities to see what Tulare County has to offer, and this is just such a wonderful tool, the map, the interactive map, I think, is just superb. The ability then to, you know, plop on a spot, and is there an app for your phone to do anything with this yet, or is that still on? Is that yet to...
Greg's working on it, I think. In fact, he's working on it right now.
I was going to comment to poor Greg, I see, as usual, wives are ahead of us, right? You know, trying to keep up with them is always a problem, but...
Website's already minimized, already maximized for small handheld devices. You should be able to get access to it just like this.
Very good.
Steve, real quick, let me just add, you know, just standing up for the younger folks in this county, since there are thirty-three percent of the population that are under the age of eighteen. I think this is a really big opportunity. I know you mentioned efforts with the Office of Education, but it's a real opportunity for students to conduct research. I see that you're doing a lot of work to make sure that this is accurate and relevant information that I think they can use for projects, and getting our youth to realize how amazing Tulare County really is can really go a long ways in bringing those kids back here to work here, raise a family here, and make this county a better place. So I encourage you to continue to collaborate with the Office of Education in any way that we can help encourage that, maybe through the Summer Night Lights program, or Step Up, or Slick Rock Film Festival. There's a lot of different things that we're involved with where maybe we can spark an interest or promote what you guys are doing and really hope to see this grow as well. So thank you for all your dedication in making this possible.
That is the mission, Supervisor Vanderpoel, and connecting with students and using this as an education tool is one of our principal objectives. We've worked on partnerships with schools, we've already done some with some school programs. It's tricky, some of the logistics of that get complicated, but we are working on it. And in regard to the remarks by Supervisor Ishida and Supervisor Worthley, you know, our motto, our title, "A Legacy of Land and People," does emphasize people, because you're right, it is about the people. We showed a video of the vernal pools, but you know, the Tulare County Treasures site is not just about critters and trees and rocks and buildings, it's really about the people who've worked to conserve them, to preserve them, to make sure that future generations be able to appreciate and enjoy them. Thank you again for your support and your time this morning.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll take up item number four, which is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning on matters which are not on our today's agenda but are within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward this time and give us your name and address, please. Lot of movement out there, but no one coming forward. Oh, here we go, Kurya. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Kurya Feros, Tulare County RMA, and I just wanted to let you know that the Sequoia Tourism Council just released the official 2015 Tourism Guidebook, and the book was printed out, forty thousand copies are going to be distributed statewide next weekend at our World Ag Expo, this weekend at the Santa Clara Bay Area Travel Show, Long Beach and San Diego travel shows, which are taking place this month. This is a major project we tackle annually as our STC work plan, which the county contributes fifteen thousand to. The book costs about forty thousand to publish, but with our community advertising, it net cost comes out to about thirteen thousand. The Sequoia Tourism Council is made up of chambers of commerce, cities, federal state partners, and our county, and hopefully you enjoy it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurya.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, take up our consent calendar. Items number nine and twenty-seven are going to be off calendar. Are there any other items members wish to handle separately or discuss separately?
Seeing none, I would move for approval of balance of consent calendar.
I'll take that motion. Second, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, Supervisor Cox being absent, so four to zero. Take us then to our untimed items, and the first item is item number twenty-eight, a request from the County Administrative Office General Services Property Management to approve a property lease agreement with Kerry Jocelyn for property located within the community of London.
Good morning. Mary Lindsay, County Administrative, Assistant County Administrative Officer, excuse me, Jane.
She hasn't been here long, she's already moved herself up.
The item before you is a property lease agreement with Mr. Kerry Jocelyn for property located in the community of London to be used as a future library facility. The terms of the agreement include a five-year lease at three hundred and fifty dollars per month with an annual three percent escalator. The agreement includes the option of two additional five-year terms. The Library for London project is a community organization whose vision is to bring a public library to the community of London. They have worked in cooperation with the Citizens for a Better London, the Tulare County Library Foundation, and the County of Tulare, and have successfully pursued and accepted the project. In addition, the Library for London organization has accepted a twenty-four-foot by forty-foot modular building that was donated by the Dinuba School District to be used as the future public library. Today's lease agreement provides for the use of the ideally-located parcel measuring fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-four square feet. Capital Projects will be overseeing the installation of the modular building and infrastructure improvements to get the library site in a condition to open and operate. There is a substandard residential structure on the property that will be removed by the Resource Management Agency within the next thirty days. In conjunction with the removal and clearing of the project site, Capital Projects will be scheduling a scoping meeting with the new librarian to finalize improvements to the property. We expect the property to include moving the donated building to a concrete pad, doing the necessary utility connections, parking, permanent bathrooms, landscaping, lighting, and fencing. We expect to begin construction on this project no later than July of this year, with the project being completed no later than September of this year, just in time for the school year to open.
Any questions, comments, members? I just want to say, Mary, thank you for presenting this to us. This is really a dream come true, spearheaded by one individual, really, who was a former resident of the community, Robert Skirdo, began this whole idea of Library for London, and originally started off as some sort of a volunteer type of organization. To the credit of our county librarian at the time, Jeff Scott, he recognized that starting something is one thing, but continuing it, allowing it to continue and prospering it over a period of time sustained, can be a very difficult process or project. So he stepped up and decided that he wanted to make this part of our county library system, and I think that was a major game changer for this project, going from a great idea to a great project. And so I'm really excited about this. I appreciate Mr. Jocelyn's willingness to work with us. It's a little bit of a two-fert, if you will, because we're going to take a dilapidated building, and it'll be destroyed, removed, so it's an improvement of that community in and of itself. And then as we put the library in place, and the goal is also to put a portable, not portable, but a, the machine where people can access books twenty-four-seven, and that will be in addition to the library, which will probably only be open a couple of days per week, at least initially. So, great project, excited about it. It happens to be in my district, but I would be just nearly as excited any place in Tulare County where we can expand our services to these disadvantaged communities that have very, very little to offer their citizens. So, great project.
Steve, real quick, tell the public the number of people that are probably going to be served by this facility.
Well, the community has over two thousand people that live in the community, and then their surrounding area there that will probably contribute another five hundred to a thousand people. So this will be, and again, it's within, you know, this is a compact community, so it's within walking distance or biking distance, so, and we'll have computers there. I just know we'll have a lot of children coming, doing their homework projects there at the library. It's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. And a community center, because there is no, unlike a lot of our smaller communities where you'll have a school, there is no school site at this community. There are, there's very, very little, and when it comes to public services, other than what we bring to the community and drive away at night, there's nothing there that stays. So this is a major improvement.
I remember growing up in Terabell and how important the library was, and we'd walk down to the library, it was right next to the fire station, and I went there the other day, and I got to looking at that, and I thought, Jesus, things seemed so much bigger when I was a little kid. She probably wasn't as big as where we're setting up here in the well, so very, very beneficial to these communities to have a library so the kids have access to books. And I would move for approval.
Second, we have a motion second, please cast your votes. Vote's unanimous, four to zero, Supervisor Cox being absent, and we'll go to item twenty-nine, request from the Sheriff's Department to waive the formal bidding process for the capital asset purchase of the composite technology law enforcement aircraft. Welcome, Sheriff. I thought you'd have your wings on you or something. They don't want me flying it, I can guarantee you that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to our CAO and County Council, good morning. It's always a pleasure to see you this morning. For the Sheriff's Department, we're requesting a waive in the formal bidding process with this particular aircraft. With the approval of the amount of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and thirty for the purchase of the aircraft itself, and then for the California State Board of Equalization, there's a seventeen thousand two hundred and four for out-of-state purchase. The reason for this request for waiver is threefold. One, we have this plane that we currently have, we went through the bidding process and discovered the other two important topics. One is, this is the only manufacturer of this plane, and secondly, it's the only aircraft that the FAA approves to allow us to mount our camera systems within this aircraft. So there's three very important topics here for the purpose of that waiver, and I just present it to the board for any questions, if you have any. The plane is an absolute, absolute benefit to the citizens of this county and for the safety of our communities. Just two real quick stories. Most recently, with the aircraft that we're using last night, we had a three-year-old child that had walked away from home. The aircraft and search and rescue teams were called out last night, successfully located that three-year-old child, as well as a recent felony subject that was wanted. Patrol couldn't find him in the nighttime, the airplane went up with the FLUR system. The FLUR system is the manufacturer approved through FFA that allows us to mount that system, and we were able to find that suspect, removing that suspect from our community for the safety of our community. So we're wanting to move forward very quickly, and again, for these three specific reasons, we're asking for a waiver. Any questions, comments?
Make a comment, I think it makes a lot of sense, and really appreciate you working so diligently and thinking outside the box to improve safety here in Tulare County. I know we just recently added this plane to our arsenal, the plane you're currently using, and it's done a great job, but I think that this plane that we're bidding or going to be buying here is going to do an even better job. So I really appreciate all your outside-the-box thinking, and keep up the great work, Sheriff. And with that, I would move for approval if there's no comments from the board members or the public.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Vote's unanimous, four to zero, Supervisor Cox being absent. Thank you for being here, Sheriff. I just wanted to have this thing pulled off the consent counter, because it's a good news story, and I thought we wanted to call more attention to it. And I know that when you compare the cost of operation compared to a helicopter, you're probably operating two planes for what you would spend for one helicopter.
Yeah, for the purchase of this plane, I can operate the airplane for about thirty-five dollars an hour versus anywhere between eight hundred and a thousand dollars an hour helicopter.
You'd have a whole fleet.
Yeah. But, Mr. Chairman, to the board, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. Appreciate it. Item number thirty is a request from the County Administrative Office General Services Property Management to publicly consummate the purchase of real property located at three 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 West Henderson in Porterville, California, which we now know has a lot of treasure sites, which is probably something of a shock to some of us.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO and County Council. I'm Robert Newby, and I work in property management at General Services within the CAO's office. The matter before you today is to consummate the purchase of real property at three thirty-three West Henderson in Porterville. On January sixth, your board set this date to accept public comments regarding the board's intent to approve this property purchase. A notice regarding this action was published in the Visalia Times Delta inviting the public to comment on this property purchase. This purchase is for a forty-two-hundred square foot building on point three-five acres located at three thirty-three West Henderson. The property was appraised at five hundred thousand dollars in July of two thousand fourteen, and this appraisal, appraised value is reflected in the purchase price for you today. The City of Porterville Planning Department reported that the purchase and intended use is consistent with their... is consistent with their adopted general plan. Besides, uh, accepting public comments, this action, uh, approves purchase of the property and authorizes the chairman to sign the, uh, real estate purchase and sale agreement. It directs the county administrative, uh, excuse me, environmental assessment officer or his designated to file a notice of exemption, authorizes the county administrative officer or his designated to execute all additional documents, uh, to consummate the purchase, and it directs the auditor to draw a warrant in favor of Chicago Title Company for their purchase price and the county's estimated share of escrow costs. Uh, Dr. Durek, the Mental Health Director from HHSA is here to talk about the program that will be housed at this facility and is available to handle any questions regarding the program to be located, located at the site. Are there any questions regarding the property purchase before I turn this over?
Any questions, members? No questions? Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning Chair Worthly, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales Lang. I'm so very pleased to be here this morning. As the board is well aware, we've been working on this project for some time. Um, we have looked at a total of eight sites over the years and, and thankfully there was issues with other sites because I think we have found the perfect site now. 333 Henderson is, uh, it works very well for this program as Mr. Newby indicated, is 4,200 square feet. There are two conference rooms, eight offices, a kitchenette, and a large gathering space. Wellness and Recovery Centers are community-based, multi-service centers that provide a supportive environment for consumers of mental health services, offering choice and self-directed guidance for recovery and transition to the community. The center will not replace the mental health clinic in Porterville, but instead provides adjunct services for commu, for consumers. The Wellness and Recovery Center will be primarily operated by mental health consumers and will train them for peer counseling, peer mentoring, advocacy, and leadership opportunities. The center will provide consumers and family members a venue for support, groups, educational opportunities, vocational services, socialization, and recreational activities. One of the most challenging aspects for those recovering from a ser, serious and persistent mental illness is developing an adequate support network and a sense of belonging. The Wellness and Recovery Center will offer the support needed to reduce the need for more costly services such as acute hospitalizations. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Questions, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment. I've been, uh, serving on the mental health board now for, I'm in my seventh year, um, and I've only been here for seven years, so clearly I've been there as long as I could have been. Um, it, it's really wonderful to serve, but this project is so critical for the Porterville and South County area. Uh, we have been here before, uh, in this very room, in these very positions, approving the purchase of a, of a site, uh, I think it was three years ago. Um, and, uh, that got, that fell through, uh, for whatever reason, but like you said, uh, I think we're here today to approve the perfect site, uh, for this, uh, facility in Porterville. Uh, what you said about what this will do for, uh, the consumers i- is spot on. Um, this will make a huge, uh, impact on them and their families in terms of their support network and, uh, recovering on their own and working towards wellness, but, um, even more important are the consumers that are going to be providing services at the site, uh, because as a part of their, uh, therapy and their ongoing recovery, um, this shows them that they can be successful and they can lead, um, a, and they can help other people that are suffering from similar, similar conditions that they are. Um, I think it's just fantastic. Uh, the one in Visalia, the Visalia Recovery and Wellness Center is working wonders, it's doing a great job for, uh, all those folks that I've just mentioned, uh, that are going to be benefiting in Porterville, and I think that this is going to be a great thing in Porterville. Um, and I think it will very soon be, uh, highlighted with a pin on the Tulare County Treasures map because that's what this is going to be for this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very clever. Supervisor Ennis?
I'm, I'm also very pleased with this, this purchase, uh, not only for the spec that we're going to have a, another clinic in Porterville for the, but to help the mental health people, but the fact we found a building that will work and the money savings there and not having to build something at prevailing wage. So I know we're going to be out some money to do a little remodel on it, but excellent building, excellent choice, good location, and 100% behind it.
Thank you.
No further comment, I'll undertake a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Seconded by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Votes unanimous, four to zero, Supervisor Cox being absent.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes our regularly scheduled meeting today, except for our closed session matter, um, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, Madam, uh, Bales Lang, what do we have for today?
Counsel. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, you do have a closed session, items on your board's agenda today, items A through C. I do anticipate an announcement.
Very good. Thank you for being in attendance this morning and have a great day.
Uh, February 3rd, 2015 by Kathleen Bales Lang, County Counsel. In the matter of item A on the board's closed session agenda, Suniga versus Cable et al. Tulare County Superior Court, case number 259306. The board voted to defend the litigation and further to provide a defense with a reservation of rights as to individual employee defendants on motion of Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, on a four to zero vote, excuse me, vote Supervisor Cox being absent. There are no other announcements.